All right, 5:15, June 3rd, I will call a meeting to order. Roll call, please. Ashley?
Lindberg?
Here.
Nipper?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Thank you.
Didn't even echo when you said, "Yeah." Like a 10-second delay or whatever was out there, whatever you meant. All right, we've all gotten the agenda, the amended agenda. Is there a... no amendment to the amendment?
Nope.
Nope? Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any conflicts? Hearing none. If it dawns on you along the way, let us know. Move on to the consent agenda, all by one motion, one roll call. We have the minutes of the May 20th, 2025 council meeting. Claims list 1339 in the amount of $136,426.71. Everybody saw some of those claims, any questions? Discussion about any of those?
No, I got my questions answered prior to.
Okay. And we also have a new application for Fairway Inc., store number 790, for a Class E retail alcohol license. A motion for the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Nipper, second by Shaven.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Thank you.
How's the time and place? A public hearing to the pro-sale city property on 506 Pine Street, Harlan, to Arnholz Rentals LLC doing business as Arnholz Rentals. There are a motion to open that hearing.
I'll motion open that hearing.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Thank you.
Everybody get a chance to look at that?
It's pretty laid out the contrary.
There was a minimum, and he was above the minimum.
Yeah.
Only one. Okay.
I'm assuming we had no other public comments?
Nope.
No else?
Written?
Nope. Inquired about it?
Nope.
No? Okay. There are a motion to close the hearing.
A motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger. Short and sweet.
Roll call Peterson, or Peterson's not here, Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we have, coming out of that, resolution number 2605 for the sale of the city interest in the real estate 506 Pine Street to Arnholz Rentals doing business as Arnholz Rentals. The price of $5,000.
I'll make the motion to resolution 2605.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Nipper.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under other business, review the HHPC downtown upper story facade and facade grant completion and the award request for 1006, 63 in the amount of $1,300. Ruby J's awning, is that, everybody saw the pictures?
Yep, looks good.
Yep.
Photo glass.
Roger signed off on it, it looks like, so.
Refresh me if you ever sent on that committee. They're only eligible for so many dollars per square foot of project, so 50%, that's why it's only the 1,300 of them, okay.
Yep.
I remember that.
I don't know if, I'm guessing she's applied before for others, actually, probably?
I think so.
She probably just had some left.
Yeah.
It was like 250 a square, whatever it put across the front for the...
That sounds right.
Because it ends up being like $5,000 is generally the total for everybody.
Some people have more, just depends on the building.
Some of them wrap around.
Milk and honey?
Right.
Has more.
I think the theater did.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jerry did, or has those corner buildings have more front sides and all that, so. Okay. Is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Amount.
Second.
Motion by Nipper, second by Shaven.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Oh.
Wait, sorry.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
I apologize for that.
Go out and zoom in, or?
No. It's just a habit.
Yeah, you know, some guys just don't like.
Business.
We get it. We're still gonna poke fun at you, though.
I'm all for it, I earned it, I deserve it.
All right. Next up, review and approve 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project change order number one in the amount of, this is a credit, right? A decrease? Amount of $13,978.92. We have a young man here to speak to us about this.
Yep, I'm Todd Meniston with BSC Kim. Of course, I've been working for the city since 1999. It's a firm, it's been around since the 70s. Today, I appreciate our continued relationship with the city. Yes, we did have the first change order that you see there was some deducts and some additions for various pipe sizes. When the project was TV'd originally, funded by the firm, you get hired for that, they were off on some of the pipe sizes, some of it was going the right way, some was going the wrong way. So that rectifies that, and that, and then we deleted two of the point repairs that were called out for the project, which were actual external digs now in sewer to fix that. And once we did the initial TV, about like this pipe tool, who's a current contractor, they looked at two of those two repairs and said that we can get, we can line those without having to dig. The other two point repairs, two and four, they looked at those and came back and said, "Yeah, we agree, we need to do those." And so the process of that, during our design, we had done a design locate request and called out the utility to give us, actually tells where those utilities approximately are. And in those particular point repairs, they were off somewhat, or actually the other side of the street from where the water main actually ended. So the contractor looked at that during the construction and said, "Hey, we're gonna have to approach this a little bit differently, we're gonna have to shore up the water main and so forth, this is not what we thought it was." And so those causes of change order two are associated with that. Change order one is a net deduct of around $13,000. Change order two is an add of around $8,600. But overall, still on the project, we're still under the current contract price by around $5,300. So if you happen to take any questions that you might have.
So my question for you is the location, how do you locate those? Why is it this variance in that? Is it something that you have to work?
It's not just on this particular project. We do design locate requests, which is the I-01 called procedure for doing design on a particular project that's gonna involve underground excavation. And so we deal with this, not every time, but routinely, unfortunately, is that utilities don't end up being where maybe the maps, the existing maps show that they are. And so we're working with the best available information from the utilities, and that's what we show on our drawings. Because typically, utilities don't wanna come out and locate just for design, and they'll locate it for actual excavation, because they're required to. But for design, it's not necessarily the case, so. That's just one of those unfortunate situations that, like I said, is we were working with the best available information that we had, and that's just kind of where we're at and put the rent in the mode of.
So I assume that it's on hold until we make approval of the contract change order?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Do we have maps that go along with any of this?
We get copies of the maps, we do what we call a design locate request, do I-01 to notify the utilities that are in that area. We have to, on a map, we have to highlight what area we're working in. And then that automatically tags, and any old utilities in that area notifies the party, responsible parties of those utilities. And so, like I said, it's not just, it's not just on this project that that happens. More than we'd like, it's just you're working with the best available information, and it's not always the most current, most up-to-date.
I'm just a very visual person, so maps help me.
For sure.
Understand the project, so.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve order, change order number one?
Motion.
Motion by Shaven, second by Nipper.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think you kind of addressed number two. Any more discussion on that one? You guys have any questions?
Still within budget, so.
Is there a motion to approve change order number two?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call Lindberg?
Aye.
Nipper?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you being here, thank you.
Anything from your chair, Jarvis, tonight? Got plenty of time. Tell us anything you want.
All right. So, a few meetings here, the housing committee. We identified three locations within the city limits suitable for residential development. The plan is to build 11 new quality homes. We conducted a local outreach and explored land acquisition opportunities. But at the moment, it can be stated yet until we're 100% sure that they're willing to sell the land and stuff to the housing committee and stuff, then we can go to the next phase.
Where's that? Where at? Oh, sorry, Paul, just regarding.
We'll wait until...
He's the closest guy to him.
Yeah, I thought you said.
Shot right through.
Sorry, not used to being here.
You're like the delay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the airport meeting, we review the airport layout plan for the apron expansion that was submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration. Corey Gaston from Kirk Michael confirmed that the Federal Aviation Administration approved the contract to the Precision Concrete Services, so we're currently waiting for the funding. So we can't do anything until we get the funding. I was in Omaha Regional Planning Affiliations, RPA 18 meeting. They focus on providing transportation planning in non-metropolitan areas. And also too, during that meeting, there was a board election, and they really did Charles Perkers from the Shelby County as the chair for the RPA 18 policy board, so, so he's gonna extend his terms, so.
Did he beat you up a couple votes, then?
No, I didn't. We also discussed the changes and the challenges in funding opportunities in higher transportation, higher department of transportation, the DOT. There's a lot of challenges, including availability of federal aid swap programs and transportation alternative program. Some of the programs are converted to a federal aid project and are no longer qualified for swap funds, so there's some programs that they switched over to the federal, which they don't, you don't qualify for if you apply for it, so. And Shelby County Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, HMO Board meeting, Shelby County Board of Supervisor meeting, Board of Judgment meeting, and also too, at a nuisance meeting with the senior attorney. We review the list of nuisance properties in need for mowing and cleanup, which is just increasing, as well as a home without utilities. We're trying to find out how many abandoned homes are out there, because some of the properties don't have sewer or utilities, but people living in it. So we're trying to figure a way to identify those and do a proper way of processing it and see what's going on with those homes. Shelby County Chamber of Commerce meet and greet of Milk and Honey. They're celebrating their 10-year anniversary. Yep. And we have weekly meeting with Regional Water, Rural Water Association. We discuss about the current water situation, so we meet probably sometimes twice a week, once a week, it just depends on the situation, so. Green Playground, we're planning a new fundraising campaign that is set up on July 19th at the Vets Auditorium, which will include a live band, what they call it, the Humdiggers?
Humdiggers.
Yep. And we have a silent auction also to the race fund for the project. The most recent event that we had, the 5K at the park, was a great success. We generated over $5,000. So hopefully this will also be able to get more funds from that. There's a newly developed group incident respond plan. We had our first meeting a couple weeks ago, and we discussed the plans and implementation of the program for the Lucas Oil Event. As expecting somewhere around 4,500 to 5,000 people that'll be coming into the Shelby County Speedway in July. So the plan is to have a group just for the incident response plan. So we included EMS, Sheriff Department, Fire Department, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce, EMA, Code Enforcer, and I'll be reaching out to the hospital for the ER, emergency room, and the jail.
Darn it.
And the reason is because there's a lot of people out of town, larger crowd, and we just wanna make sure that we have that plan in place, just in case.
Because they had one last year, right?
Yeah.
And it went okay, seemed like, we didn't hear a lot about, a lot of positives, but.
Actually, yeah, it went very well, we didn't have too much in regards to incidents, you know? I mean, like your normal race night. I mean, it was a standing room only crowd, and the company that runs this event was so impressed with Harlan that they actually had Gary Hoppe attend their January, their annual awards banquet out of New York, and they gave Harlan an award for the event that we held. So they're coming back this year, and we wanna really impress them this year, because they're also talking to another event that's run by Ken Morrison, who's a NASCAR driver, but he has a Sprint Cup series that he runs. And they're trying to convince him, "You need to come to Harlan with your series." So we're starting to get some attention there, that's good stuff. A lot of it has to do with the track changes it took place a couple years ago.
So, and also reach out to local businesses and see if they could extend their business hours to, you know, the day before the event and the second day.
A one-day, one-evening event still, is it two?
It's a one-evening event, although because of the calendar this year, Gary was telling me it's very possible that many of the teams will come in on one day, and that they'll open the track for them to be able to practice, so that means they'll be staying overnight.
They race on Tuesday during the weekend?
They race on Tuesday night, yeah.
So still have their Saturday night, normal race, probably?
Correct.
They're not filling into that one, they're separate, totally a separate deal.
This is a unique event, yeah.
And what night did you say that was on? September what?
It'll be July 15.
Oh, July?
Yeah. Oh, it's 15. Yeah, it's 15. So I reach out to local businesses, I'm still, there's a few businesses that I need to reach out to, restaurants and stuff, and ask them if they could open extra two hours on the day before the event and the day of the event, so they can generate a little bit of revenue and accommodate the crowd, too, as well.
Yeah, last year, they had those big haulers pulling in, like the night before, midnight parking, and, yeah, because I mean, that's like 25,000 to win or something?
Yeah, yeah.
So it brings quite a bit of national attention.
It does. This is a east, south, and midwest series, so they race all over, and their season lasts a long time, and that's, these are all professional drivers, and that's what they do for a living, is they're.
And they go stink to stink.
Yeah.
Todd, did you mention last year that they were possibly gonna work on more seating?
There's been some conversation about that. They added seating when they redid the track, and there's been conversation about trying to add some additional seating, and maybe even just temporarily for the event.
Sure.
And then even, I floated an idea past Jarvis, I said that if we continue to see this growth, we probably are gonna have to consider trying to, you know, set up a camp area somewhere within the city buildings for them to be able to pull the haulers and hang out, because with this crowd, the camping spots that we have down the fairgrounds won't really support if they're all gonna be able to. Not small, but expect a chance.
Is this a televised thing?
It is televised, but it's not like on your normal TV channels.
Do they bring in their own people to do all that, too?
Yeah, yeah. But it's like our Saturday night races here, there is a streaming service that you can subscribe to to watch those races.
And also too, does the grant that Gary applied for hotel motel, they have advertising locally here, too, so if that goes, if it worked out, could you use that to can one in, whatever? Just local advertisement.
Yeah, in fact, I just wrapped up today with the decoy people, so that's the billboard out front of Buxnor, and so we'll be running. I had to take the poster that they gave me and really quiet it down, because it was a little too busy for the, you know, few moments that's up on the board, but that'll be starting here this week, and it'll run for six weeks on both sides of the board. And it only costs $100, it's actually not an expensive advertising form. But that'll catch people who are driving through town, and hopefully they'll see that that event's coming up.
Is the seating down there a fair board thing, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the raceway itself and all the seating and everything is owned by the fair board.
So I'm sure they're a part of this then, too, as far as?
They've been having conversations with Gary, yes, yes.
Guys, when's the fair? Is it right before that?
Yeah, fair would be right.
Right before that?
And, you know, and like, maybe some of that temporary seating that they bring in, like for the bowl riding or anything.
Think it may be utilized.
It'll work a little bit of the speedway. Although.
But safety-wise, though, do you have to put something in front of it, though? Does it have to be any kind of guard or netting up in front of, you know, hard rail things?
I don't know. I do know, because like, there's not, there's not netting in front of the seats that are like right in front of the, you know? There is some in the old graces.
Maybe you can get people to pay more to be right up front.
That's what I was gonna say, is you actually don't.
Give high fives.
You actually don't wanna be up front, because these cars stroll a lot of mud. And a lot of people walked out last year, and you blow your nose and it's nothing but dirt. But it's a very exciting race, and it really is, and I'd say these guys are pros. It's amazing how fast they can go on that track.
Yeah, so the incident response plan will be in charge of direct traffic, parking, stuff. We have the fire department there, too, so. And the sheriff, they say they have Gator and four-wheelers and UTVs that can utilize, will have people inside and outside, just in case something happens, so. Had several upcoming online training sessions scheduled with ICMA, and probably for this month, there's two training sessions that I'm gonna be doing. And I gotta respond back from CAT Grant, Community Attraction and Tourism Grant. There's additional information that they need from the CD and the county. They just wanna see if there's a support from the county, too. In order to qualify for that grant, you have to have some support from the county. So I reach out to Mike Colby and talk to him and ask him about if the county would be willing to do a help with the demolition of the old playground, which will count as.
In-kind?
In-kind, yep, which, so he's working on that, too. And we get more hotel motel funds that, I'm gonna send an email to request and see if that will qualify also, too, because it stays the county hotel motel fund, so if that qualifies, then we don't have to really push the county aspect of it. That's all I got.
You have anything for Jarvis?
Jarvis, quick question before you go here, and I don't wanna, I feel like I'm picking on any department or anything reference, but when you guys have these, we're going back to the nuisance, the nuisance committee, which I'm assuming consists of like you, Ashley, Todd.
Roger, Todd, and Jack.
Roger and Jack, okay. Is it possible that maybe, whether, I'm not saying monthly, but like, we could get like a quarterly update if it is Roger and Jack that are doing these nuisance codes and stuff, where we can kind of say somewhat informed from this, where Jack can come or as the code enforcement officer present to us.
Quarterly report.
Okay, yeah. Some statistical stuff or whatever that we can kind of see, so we, because we're two years into this, and I mean, I've seen maybe one report that showed an initial total of what they've done for calls. I'm not, I mean, I know he's busy, I understand that, but I'm just saying where we can stay informed, because if we get calls or requests or say like, "Hey, what's going on with this?", we have no idea. Just wondering if it's a possibility to, to see if it's possible to make reference. And like I said, not picking on Jack or Roger at all, just so the council can stay informed, because, you know, when people say, "Hey, well, what's going on?", and so and so that, I'm like, "I have no idea what you're even talking about", you know? I mean, it just if, if that's something that we would like to work out.
He has a report that generates.
Even a quarterly update or something, I mean, you know, come in and just, you know, answer any questions that we may have from him and council, and just be transparent to the people and be able to justify, and not justify, but answer.
Or just reports of the property.
Yeah, reports of the property, or like, give us a code enforcement update, this is what we're currently working on, this is what we've been working on, this is what we kind of did. Like the sheriff's office comes in and gives, you know, monthly statistical updates on stats, just kind of somewhat seeing from that, because that's a newly created position. It'd be nice if we kind of have some data to reflect back on, just so, hey, this is, this is working out well, so.
Yeah, I can.
If that was something that we could make.
Definitely, makes sense.
I don't know, I don't mean to speak out of turn or speak on behalf of council, I just think it would be.
Yeah, we had a meeting two days ago, I mean, you know, it was yesterday, I went through a demo, there's a new program out there that can help tracking and keeping the reports and stuff, because there's a little bit of issue with the tracking and stuff, so.
So you guys meet monthly, Jarvis?
We meet monthly, but we talk almost every day, you know, with updates of the properties and stuff like that, so if that list, and sometimes I get phone calls when people are saying, "Hey, what's going on in this property?", and then I reach out to him, you know, send an email, we communicate that way.
I don't wanna come off as micromanaging, I just wanna come off as like saying, "Hey, that we're seeing data."
Data, to support the position.
To support the position and stuff and reference it. You know, I'm, yeah, I mean, they're busy, you can see, because we get people that come in and want to pay the fines or pay the tickets, I'm like, "Oh, you need to go to City Hall and take care of that", so.
Because you're basically just wanting, you don't want names and addresses, you just want...
Yeah.
We had so many of these, so many of those.
I mean, like, you know, dog.
General things, what we're addressing.
Just a statistical update to say, "Hey, that, you know, this is proven, this is working well", you know, if we need to make any changes, or, you know, is it continuing? I mean, so, just be transparent, honest, I believe that, if we could request that. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Anything else for Jarvis? Okay, thanks Jarvis. It's like you're staying busy. Guessing your wife probably thinks the same thing, so.
Change it from a fire hose some days.
My report, I don't really have anything to report, other than I attended a few activities, and I'm sure Todd will talk about a couple of them, and, you know, real life, great night for an event downtown. Wasn't, I mean, I've seen more people, hopefully there's more people in years to come, but it's, I know they, they're there for a good reason, and I think they raised a good amount of dollars, and then the art in the park, those were, that was a great event, walked over to that, and other than that, that's like, the guy over there seems to be kind of a busy guy. So, and I saw the guy sitting next to him at both events, too, so they were both involved. One was kind of in charge and helping, and one was there doing what I was doing, so. I don't really have anything to report from my chair, so.
That was good for Roger to get the fire truck up there, too.
Yep, yep, yep. The fire department was down there doing their thing, a lot of interest in that big flag, a big, big fire truck over there, so.
Also they had their memorial thing at the Fire Department on Saturday too.
Saturday.
It was a good turnout, yeah. I was out there too.
Okay, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Todd Vleen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Todd.
Just got a few items to note that'll be taking place over the next couple of weeks. Starting with Art of the fundraiser, that'll be on Friday, June 20th. This year it'll be out at the North Course. As we have done in the past, it'll be a four-person night hole scramble. The teams will check in from four to five, then we'll have a putt contest at 5:15 and we'll get folks teed off by 5:30. The cost is $2.25 per team and then if they need the carts, they can rent the carts for $30. And then we also, we'll have sponsorships out there, hole sponsorships for $50 and sidewalk for 25. And again, this year what we're encouraging our hole sponsors to do is, you know, come, set up on the tee box and talk to people about your products and services, so hopefully we'll have a few of them that'll do that. This is the week for FMCTC's summer picnics that they do throughout the county. So they serve pizza ranch chicken, it's just kind of a celebration for their customers. And for Harlan, it'll be taking place Thursday night from 5:00 to 7:00 and that'll be at Vets Memorial Auditorium. Also, as I'm sure you're aware, the Harlan Community Intermediate School is having a run sale from 8:30 to 3:00, both Wednesday and Thursday, and they're selling everything and that was capitalized, that is left over in the intermediate building before they do the demolition. So if people want to have that stuff around their home, then go pick that up. The Harlan Theater Summer Kids Free Movies, that's been a great program, those crank back up next week. They run the movies on Tuesday and Wednesday at 10:00 AM and the movie next week is The Wild Robot. Also, Hero's Addict has a store-wide 60% on sale going on this Saturday. Again, that's just to be part of the citywide garage sale. We have a blood drive coming up on June 23rd from 8:00 to 2:00, that's gonna be at the Oval Room. And people can call Ruth at 755-4316 to schedule an appointment. And it, it just seems like every time I talk about blood drives, I gotta remind people that, because they kind of forget, but our blood supply in the country is still very, very low. And so if you have the opportunity to donate, please do. Also, we have a ribbon cutting coming up on June 27th at 2:00. Sunset Scoops now finally has all of their machines and everything they wanted in and installed and ready to go, so we're looking forward to having a ribbon cutting there and have a little ice cream while we're there. The, what, actually tomorrow, the Harlan Community Library Summer Kickoff Event is at 10:00 AM, that's gonna be at the North Park and they're gonna have a hot dog picnic at 11:00 AM. They're also gonna have a magic show taking place while all this is going on. Reminder that tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:30 is a tornado disaster lessons learned program. That's gonna be at the Turboson Center. So we'll have a panel of people, experts and people who were impacted by the tornado last year, talking about some of the lessons that they learned and some of the things that were surprises, you know, things that weren't covered that you would expect to be covered. Even the fact that if you live in the rural area versus living in the city limits, if you have this type of a disaster, rural areas actually get less benefit from FEMA and the SBA than if you're within the city limits. And, you know, get people also start thinking about, yeah, if I have a problem, where can I temporarily set up my business? Well, we're repairing my problem and how am I gonna handle my employees? Because you don't want to lose your employees because, you know, they probably aren't gonna be able to get by on just, you know, taking unemployment and you don't want them to go off somewhere else.
Todd, I'm excited. Have you heard anything I mean, we expect probably a pretty good turnout for that?
We have been promoting it a lot, yeah. The reason we picked tomorrow night, there's, it's very hard to pick a night where there's absolutely nothing going on. So we picked the night that had the very least going on. So there's not a whole lot of Little League and soccer and all that type of stuff going on tomorrow night, so hopefully, hopefully the people will come out. And then finally, Monday, June 23rd and Tuesday through, Tuesday, June 25th, 4th are the steam days over at the Harlan Community Library that are gonna be doing some pretty cool stuff, including on the 23rd, we're gonna have a Lego car race from 2:00 to 4:00 for the kids. And then they're gonna do a build a board game on Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:30. So really cool programs, love to see what the library's doing. And I would never would have thought of a Lego car race, but I'll bet you the kids will really enjoy that. And so, so that's kind of what's going on over the next couple of weeks around. Thanks.
Thanks.
Minnesota Utilities, Joe Rouschenberg.
Hello, everyone. How are you, Joe? Hello, got about three, four items here. Usual, can I catch up on a couple of our projects, overhead underground conversion project? Burns Electric is setting equipment, pulling wire, connecting services. Area they're kind of concentrating this week, I guess while they can with the weather, Trader Court, our old facility, kind of coming out of our substation down there, and the alley along the east side of the square. So, like I said, I think they were in town just for a little bit at this point, but then with the rain, didn't get much accomplished with, like I said, rain has slowed the progress, but in this case it's, it's a good thing, of course, it means rain out. Raw Water System Improvements Project, Caboy Pumping, who's the subcontractor for recovery and trenching, doing the well drilling, has moved their work trailer and their drill rig onto the site, so we're getting closer to starting on the second location for the deep well. They have not set up yet, but the plan is to start drilling on Monday, June 9th. So like I said, hopefully, I know this is gonna be pretty muddy, I mean, but hopefully they can kind of get set up at the end of the week and be ready to roll from that point. If anybody's wondering too, on Chapperton Avenue there, the Water Department replaced two valves at 9:00 in Chapperton. So that's kind of why that's blocked off or we got the traffic control down there. But two of those valves were broken shut and I think that goes back to when we had those four leaks that are around December. Got those valves, I mean, tried to isolate that leak that was further west there on Chapperton towards 12th Street. I think they, thought they opened it back up, but they actually were broke shut and then we found out there were some low pressure areas while we were trying to fill the pool this summer, which we'd never had before. So that's where they kind of discovered that those two valves needed replaced. So that's what they worked on, got that taken care of last night, shut the water off at like 10:00 o'clock, worked till about 2:30 this morning, got it ready and replaced, got it backfilled the sand. We're gonna try to pour the concrete back today with the weather, the whole is tomorrow, maybe by tomorrow afternoon they'll get that poured, let it sit overnight and then possibly open it Thursday, I mean, looking at opening it Thursday then, back up to full traffic. Lastly, I think I mentioned, you know, as far as telecom switching to the internet-based TV offering. Had sent letters out to notify our current customers, trying to get them to schedule, you know, as far as the conversion from the traditional cable to this internet-based TV. Actually got it, Jenny has it set up to where June and July, we're looking at having kind of a show and tell on Tuesdays, 4:30 to 6:00, and then Saturdays, 9:00 to 11:00, both in June and July. And tonight was the first night, that's kind of what Jenny was later, not knowing if she's gonna make it for sure. Plenty of people.
We had at least 30 people that were there between 4:30 and the time I got here, I think, so, yeah.
So I think there's good interest, just kind of showing people what prices might look like or gonna look like with the change and then just kind of showing them how easy it is to operate once you get on it. I mean, have you done much with the fire stick or kind of local TV, you know, it's fairly...
Similar to like your Netflix and...
Yep, yep. I think it's gonna be, and that's the thing, you know, it's moving towards streaming, so we're just trying to get ahead of the, stay ahead of the curve.
Are you guys selling the fire sticks or do you have to purchase those?
No, we are selling them.
You are selling them.
And we actually prefer you buy it from us, because then we know they'll work, because there are some that you can buy on Amazon that don't work with the new app.
And on that too, Kyle, NCTC where we're actually currently getting, you know, working with getting our program for the traditional cable, they've got a supplier, I mean, we're going through them to where we're actually getting a pretty good deal on too, to compare...
Yeah, unless Amazon's running a special, they're cheaper for us on a daily basis that...
But yeah, we're cheaper than a normal Amazon prices, like you said.
It's a one-time fee, right? I mean, they buy, you know, it's not like a rental or like DVD boxes, so that's...
Yeah, we just figured we would sell them, it'd be easier for the customer, for those that don't shop online.
Any questions?
It's kind of nice to actually see people excited about something.
Jarvis met the power outage on Sunday, noonish. I think we were out without power half hour 45 minutes. Found out it was a breaker at our, we call it the plant sub, which is down by our old light plant. So once that breaker went out, we lost power between that substation and the west substation out there by ID. So basically it kind of killed the south and west part of town. But like I said, they diagnosed it, figured out it was that breaker down at the old facility at that substation and they got it tripped back or found a different way to feed it, you know, got everybody back up and going, you know? And like I said, I think it's, we've been pretty fortunate, usually our response time usually is about that half hour, 45 minutes.
That's a pretty quick bucket.
And that improves our whole thing, you know, with spending this money on this, on that overhead underground conversion, part of that is, you know, we're adding extra ties, extra loops where if something happens, we can backfeed from another direction, so it's really helpful for reliability, which that shows right there, you know, not much downtime.
Yeah, a few phone calls, people calling, asking me what's going on. They say, we call that Chumu.
Tell Joe.
Yeah.
He can fix anything. All right, thanks Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I don't see a lot of public out there tonight. Any comments from up here, anybody? Meeting adjourned.